Go ahead and get started. Apologies for letting you go a little late. And my understanding here, too, and the attorney or the clerk can correct me on this because this is a workshop. We are taking no votes.
Oh, it is a committee of the whole.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. We'll scrap all that. All rules apply. Mr. Barker?
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the opportunity to present the mayor's budget. Each of the departments will also be presenting their sections of that for the major departments.
Okay, just one moment, please.
Yes, sir.
Recommendation: The city council approved the mayor's fiscal year 2013 proposed budget. Need a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to present the mayor's budget for you. We intend to have the major departments do presentations also. That list has been sent out over the next couple of days. And if necessary, Wednesday is available. I'm especially pleased to present this budget in that this budget is a balanced budget. It shows the efficiencies that have occurred to date throughout the city as the mayor has been in office 17 months. I know the charter was changed sometime before that, about 10 months before that, and we're working through that. I'm also pleased that we're able to present this budget with no layoffs or furloughs, provide services to the citizens, continue those services, improve those services. And with that, I will go through the formal presentation, Mr. President, members of the city council.
May I ask one agenda question before we go?
Well, and I've tried to get you guys in a couple of sessions like this before. Don't look to me for permission to speak is what I think will gain much better ground as long as everything remains civil, you know, if we just have an open discussion.
And I just, I've had calls about, there are at least three departments or items that I know some people have called me that they were interested in, and they're not on the agenda, and the people were wondering when we would have a chance to discuss the mayor's budget, MIS budget, and non-departmental budgets. And because they, or, you know, the outside agency funding, and I didn't know.
Certainly, if that would be during the second day, if the council has others that are not on the agenda that they wish to discuss, we'll just put it at the end of the second day. As you know, we have the third day reserved, Wednesday, if we need to move into that. So the times that we have, as you know from being in these workshops before, are target. And sometimes they go quicker or shorter than what we have to do. But we will, anything such as that that you wish to discuss, we'll certainly bring up the second day before we close out.
And I guess my, part of my reason for asking was at least when the outside agencies, you know, people were hoping to attend, and they were wondering if we could give them even a target time that we could have that.
We could do the outside agencies and pick a particular time. Let me look at that, maybe today, throughout the day.
I'll let them know, we'll do it probably tomorrow, and we'll get them a time.
Right. I'll let you know after lunch, after I check the schedule and see what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to go through an explanation of the process that we're going through. And Chris, could you lower the lights a little bit? I think that maybe the people in the back could see this better. Thank you, sir. And just to remind council, as the president has said, the budget workshops are held as a committee of the whole setting. This is the first year we've done that. That was comments that we've heard from council last year that they wanted maybe to take some votes in the issue of straw votes versus regular votes. So it has been set up, it's been advertised as a committee of the whole setting. And the presentations are from the various department divisions throughout the city. And it provides an opportunity also to discuss policy issues pertaining to the fiscal year 13 budget. And, of course, the meetings are open to the public.
I'll start right next to you.
And then that, just a request, that any proposals for amending or changing the budget that are formally approved by a majority of city council, and that any of those changes be balanced as you go through the budget. Overview of the issues. The budget objectives in reality is that we continue to, the preservation of essential services, which this budget does, continues to position the city positively to weather the current economic crisis. And, as you know, we've been in this since 2008 with up and downs of the budget. And again, I will say, I'm proud that we have the budget balance that's presented to you. The mayor emphasized that. And any corrective actions that needed to be taken, outsourcing, those type of things, you will hear throughout the departments as they give their presentations. It continues to align ongoing general fund expenditures with ongoing revenues. The importance of this issue is that, you know, we always want to know what our fund balance is, what our reserves are, those type of things. All that is online now. We publish that monthly online for the citizens to review. And long as you keep your budget in balance with your ongoing revenues, then your fund balance is going to hold true. As you know, just last month, we reduced the current FY12 budget by a million dollars and made appropriate expenditure adjustments because of revenues were not coming in as projected. And remember, too, that the point that this is just a snapshot in time, the budget is. We did that snapshot a little earlier this year. We started and closed out what was presented and documented to you and given to the council by the mayor on June the 11th somewhat earlier. So there are a couple of major adjustments that have occurred. And that occurred, of course, in the library that you've heard and read about in the paper. And there will be a presentation, it's part of the library presentation, adjustments to that budget. We have received the property appraisers' valuation numbers, and that affected the CRA and their proposed adjustments to that budget because they did not come in where we started. But, so when we gave it to you, that was the snapshot. There are a couple of adjustments that the mayor is recommending as we move forward in adopting the final budget, and those will be presented when each of those budgets are presented to you. And the reality is that the decline in property values continue to occur. We're keeping the millage level at FY12 millage level. If you know, this council reduced that millage at the recommendation of the mayor last year. We have done performance contracting of the city, and the departments will discuss that as they go through that and what impact that's had on their budgets. And we are continuing to promotion of growth of both the economy and the population. Recently, there were some annexations that the council took action on to increase our valuation, the total area that the city has. And the mayor is continuing to, on growth and economy, and keep this city moving forward even while the economy is declining. Creating opportunities to be more energy efficient, and you'll hear that in several areas of the department presentations. Reorganization of various functions within the city to improve efficiency and to be more customer-friendly. Address the annual pension cost and unfunded liability, and as council is aware, those are ongoing discussions with the unions in that area. The recommended budget highlights. Again, we're looking at a 24-month budget. You're adopting a one-year budget, beginning 10-1-12, ending 9-30-13, but we've given you projections for 2014. It does not anticipate any drawdown of fund balance, and there is one exception with that. This will be the second year of one-time revenue. It's not fund balance with the whole Army Reserve property that was $2,650,000, we were drawing down this year, another $650,000 next year. That is all tied around that the general fund debt will be paid off this year on 10-1-12. Property valuation decreased, and therefore it caused the revenue adjustment of $126,900 down from what you see in your budget for FY12. And, of course, the economy still affects, and I have adjusted the revenues for the million dollars that has been reduced last month in the 12 budget. Excuse me. And so this is based on my current revenue estimates, assuming that the revenues for 12 come in where I projected those. Employee salaries and benefits. Of course, there's still been salary freezes, and that's across the board, salary freezes. There still are promotions going on and that type of thing. But as far as and across the board in this budget, there is not one. And that has been, the last increase was given in 2008 budget. The pension cost did decrease somewhat, but that is because of some individuals going into drop and entering or either going ahead and retiring from the city completely. Yes, ma'am?
Dick, on the salary freeze, how many employees does that actually affect? Because, you know, we have so many of our employees that are either in the police union, one of the many, well, one of the many police unions is the fire union and the general employees union. And I know that after you and I've had, well, actually, as Mr. Fanzone had our things, that several of them are getting the increases. So I think it's probably a little misguided.
Well, and I guess it's how that I look at it. The issue of salary freeze, did we do something across the board for the employees? The answer is no, they have not received that. Individual promotions, too. As far as the pension issue relating to that, if you look at it as a total compensation package and pensions as part of that package, the, I know the Ask Me group, that's the one that has already voted on theirs. I know we're still talking with the other unions. But they took a part of that package, their pension package, reduced it, and are now taking that and increased income. And yes, that is increased income, but they gave up something as part of a new deal.
And I'm not making that argument, but still, there was no freeze on theirs because they did, in fact, get a three-year bump on salary increases.
That is proposed. That has not happened.
Okay.
May I ask a little more on that? First, is the, as you pointed out, we're, you know, in the negotiations with the ones that are agreed in negotiation, they're giving up something pension-wise, gaining something salary.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that an equal balance? Or will we need to, you know, like with Ask Me, did they gain more in salary than they gave up in pensions so that we're going to need to adjust our budgets?
I think when we get through with all the unions, I will have a better idea of that, taking it individually. I think, you know, some of the union representatives may have a different idea than I would say if it's equal. But it was negotiated, and that's what they ended up with. If any adjustment does need to be made, it will not be part of this budget. I think the council will adopt this budget, and then that issue will be brought forward if it's still in this year, if it's fiscal 12 or fiscal 13. We will handle that on a supplemental budget resolution.
I guess one of the things that I think, you know, if I were negotiating with someone over, you know, money issues, and I have to, you have to somewhere know, okay, we have X dollars that we're willing to pay you to get you to give up this future benefit because that's, I mean, that's what we're doing with these union negotiations. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, as the mayor is going into these union negotiations, which of the programs in this budget or what other things are we anticipating will be reduced if we have to give them more in salary?
The goal was that the offsetting increase that has not occurred, if you recall that we had pension actuaries done for all the plans as of 9-30-11.
Right.
And we were going to see a 2.5%, 2.6% increase, a 2.5%, 2.6% million dollar increase across the whole city for those. So the goal is to eliminate that increase in total and that the existing budget, as it relates to the contracts, would even out. Now, that's not any across the board yet that we're talking about. So that is the goal. Whether that goal is reached, but going in, that's what we want it to do, that the costs would equal out in your, between your pension line items and your salary line items. And that's yet to be seen if that goal will be reached, but that's where it was started at.
So the budget we have right now, does that assume the new actuarial thing you just said that includes a $2.5 million increase into pension? And so what we're bargaining with the unions is to not have that $2.5 million increase that's not even in the budget right now? Is that approximately?
That's correct.
And so any salary increase that we are agreeing to in this is going to have to be subtracted from somewhere in the budget? Is that a sort of a fair assumption?
If that's how it comes out, you're correct. We're trying to make the salary adjustments also within the total dollar amount so that the idea is to make the total deal, just the deal as it relates to the union and pension, to be a wash to the budget.
Okay.
And like I say, that's yet to be seen if that happens, but that's the total thing we're looking at for 13. It may impact 14 and 15 because they're looking at doing three-year contracts.
Right.
And the way that I look at that is that, well, that's when we get into the 14 budget. If that's what they agreed to this year and all the contracts were signed, we will budget that in the 14 budget. But for 13, the goal is to not have impact in that, you know, the line items will change, but that the deal would be able to be funded with the existing dollars.
Okay. So basically, then, the union negotiations, the negotiators who are going in there are looking to reduce the pension liability, 2.5 million plus any amount that we're willing to give up in salaries.
For 13.
For 13.
For 13, then 14 and 15 will carry in.
Right, right. I mean, that, it's, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Dick, on this $1 million economic incentive.
Yes, sir.
Have they identified any sort of specifics or characteristics of the incentives that they're going to portray to business owners, $1 million?
They have not. I think it's going to be flexible. The goal that the mayor had given in the budget is he wanted to do that. And I'll talk about that some now since you brought it up, councilman. But the issue is, we know that from various areas, that we may have new revenues coming in to the city. And as much as they relate to economic development, it's to plow those dollars back into economic development. Well, how do we start with that? Well, to start with that, what I suggested to the mayor were two ideas. One is, you know, from time to time, we borrow money from ourselves, sanitation, we've done that from the insurance fund and other areas, as issues have come up, and then they pay back with some interest. Or we do an outside borrowing. And I know one of the questions had been raised, is that conflict with the current debt policy that the city council has? And it's really how we handle that. It may end up being like a transfer with an understanding that it would be paid back at some time. But I'm looking at the ongoing revenues, the growth in those revenues to replenish that fund over time. But as far as the incentives and that type of thing, I think that's going to depend on the deal that's being looked at at the time. So it's not, may not be a set issue. It's going to be who comes in, what we can do. And it provides an opportunity really to grow our revenue, sort of like the pension issue. I mean, what you have is we're, we know we're going to get revenue if we get businesses in here, our tax base is grown and that type of thing. But right now, today, we do not have that. So we have to set up some type of system so that those incentives and those type of things that we do, that we associate the payback of that for them being over here over a period of time. You know, like in the CRA, they capped it when you set up the Tiff district, it capped, and then the revenues came back in, and anything of that revenue in that particular district goes in. So there's a variety of ways that you look at it. An old accounting term I would use is like a revolving fund, that the money that you're expending now would end up coming back in from those fees and revenues that are identified. But it's a way to get started in some issues. You know, we have a lot of vacant land that I know that there are issues dealing with. As a matter of fact, the CRA slash council has dealt with the Hixmark issue, and I think there's going to be more. I know the mayor and his team is really going out and trying to induce businesses to come here, and we want to be prepared and ready for those type of things. And so that's sort of the challenge and the goal that the mayor had set up. And it's an idea, and I said, well, we need to go ahead and put it in the budget and have that out there for the council to look at and see. But it's an investment plan in the city. You invest in us, and we want to let those monies recirculate back in in a revolving type fund.
Okay, now, this is separate and distinct from the chamber efforts regarding economic development, et cetera. This would be just a separate entity that will be hell and house to attract businesses, and it's not going to infringe on that effort. And do we anticipate that chamber or some of the outside sources would come and want to peel in on this one mill?
Well, you know, I've been here a long time. And people find out there's money there. You know, they usually come and may ask for part of it, but, so I can't say if they will or not. And part of it is a cooperative effort. If it's a deal that's smart for the chamber, smart for the city, smart for the county, that may be that we look at to do a piece of that. But the intent is to have a revolving type fund for that growth to come through, come in, and we're going to have to have some startup money to do that.
Thank you.
And right now, probably do some type of internal borrowing. You know, we have a pooled cash concept, and the cash comes in. So that fund may run in the negative for a while and then come back and be positive as the revenues grow and come in. But it's an interesting idea, and when the mayor presented it to me and we worked on it, I think it is a concept that will work, that will sort of identify funds separately for this type of issue and incentive that he has in order to grow the city. And it does provide, you know, that in the budget to get something started. I hope one day it's a lot bigger than this, that money comes in, but it's a start of getting that fund started.
Thank you. May I follow up on that? In the budget, you say a million dollars, and so you anticipate that this year we will internally borrow about a million dollars for it?
I would look at it more of a cap.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Unless we come back to council and something really takes off, and, you know, we need more, sort of where do you start at?
And?
And I would look at it more as a cap and a revolving type thing, not exactly like Tree Landscape Trust Fund where I report that to you and how much money's in there each time. But it is separate and apart, and that's a separate reporting that council wants.
And then with that fund, my understanding is that any dollar amounts within a fund the mayor can spend as he wishes according to our current policies. So is there any controls in place on how that money is spent? Will that come to council at all? Or is that money that we are appropriating into that fund, I'm not sure from where, and then he has unfettered rein over that money at this point?
I look at it as under the current purchasing policy, what his limits are and that type of thing.
Which is within the fund, the whole amount, is how I understand it.
If it's something, you know, small and marketing or little amounts that we have to pay in order to do something, yes, currently, if there were service contracts involved, you're correct. If it was actually building something, a public works-type project that we were doing, those do come back to council, you know, toward those.
Right. Well, just off the top of my head, you're talking about donating vacant land. Does vacant land come back to council? If somebody?
No, the council has a specific policy on real property, and that comes back.
And then any sort of?
Just like Hixart did.
Right. But if we gave a loan or whatever, a five-year forgivable loan to Hixart, let's say, they bought some land, we gave them a five-year forgivable loan, would that come to council?
Yes, it'd be my understanding, those type of direct loans, I thought you were talking about purchases, but direct loans would come back to council.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the policy is on it, what amount we're going to have oversight over this because, you know, it's a lot of money to?
I understand. It's a new concept, new fund, new idea. I think it's positive, and it's like anything else, we work through those issues. But my general comments on the answer to those questions is how I see it working at this point.
And then the $900,000 you've put into that fund, where has it come from right now? Or are you anticipating we're going to have to take a separate action later to transfer from pooled cash in the general fund into this fund?
No. If council approves it, then in essence, what happens is if expenditures occur from there, that fund goes in negative and is part of the whole $70 million pooled cash because it's an equity part, it owns an equity share of that which happens to be negative, that it would owe back to the various funds of the city, you know, the total pooled cash. It's not like a direct transfer that I'm looking at right now. We could do that, take a million dollars from the insurance fund, put over there, set the fund up. We could do that, but that's not what I'm looking at at this time. I mean, it can work a variety of ways. But the idea is to get that incentive fund out there, revenue, new revenues coming in that are off new development or that type of thing, to get those in that fund, to get it started, and to invest those back into the community and hopefully build our tax base and revenue base to get those back in. You know, it may be new leases, maybe we lease the land or something like that, those new leases and those type of things that happen. That revenue that comes back in would go into this fund.
Thank you.
Ms. Mack?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for keeping this in a way that I can participate. If I may ask a question of Mr. Barker and then make a comment?
Certainly.
Okay. Mr. Barker, with regard to this economic development fund in the budget, it shows that the first $100,000 is coming, is going to be revenue from traffic fines. And where has the traffic fine money been spent in previous years?
Yes, ma'am, and, Mr. President, and members of council, when we were putting this together, I was looking at increased traffic fines, for example. I know it's been before council, then there've been legal issues, and I'm not sure which way it's going. But I was looking at the red light camera, if council chooses to do that type of operation, that those revenues which are new, I don't want any revenues that are affecting current operations going into the general fund. It is not the plan of the mayor or my plan to use those revenues. I actually leave those, it's that growth in revenue. So if we did the red light cameras, if there were new leases off of some of these vacant lots or new sales of these vacant lots and that type of thing, that those would come into this fund. But it's not the intent to hurt any current revenue source and where it's going.
So just to clarify, what I've heard from Mr. Barker is that that $100,000 in traffic fines is totally an increase from the amount of traffic fines we receive in previous years? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The intent, and those do go in general fund currently, and it's certainly not the intent to hurt the general fund.
Okay. And council, if I may now make a comment? I would seriously beg of you on behalf of the citizens that you, if you approve this economic development trust fund, that you put some controls on it. You know, when I read economic development incentive fund, that is incentives to businesses. And yet, moments ago, I heard Mr. Barker talk about marketing expenditure, service con- and yet moments ago, I heard Mr. Barker talk about marketing expenditures, service contracts under this fund, and all of a sudden, please excuse, you know, the, the term I use, but all of a sudden begins to worry me that it sounds like a slush fund. So I, I beg of you, you know, if you approve it, current purchasing orders notwithstanding, this is not a purchasing fund, this is an incentive fund, that's the way it's titled, and if you approve it, please put some controls so it comes back to council and you know exactly what's going to be spent. Thank you.
Ms. Barker?
Yes, and, and I would like to say, this, this, as I mentioned before, be much like the Tree Trust Fund, it will be reported separately out to council as part of my quarterly reports that I give to council and that type of thing, so that at least you see the balances and that, and if further questions develop from that, certainly we can handle those as, as they come up monthly or quarterly. And then, interest income, it's just not there. I mean, we aren't earning a lot, so you're seeing a lot of the funds, that, that the interest income from past years is, is just not there, it's not a big part of the budget anymore, but in some of the funds, there is minimal amounts that, that are budgeted there. I do think, Mr. President, I skipped over the position changes. There were eighteen positions eliminated since FY two thousand and eleven, and then this year, we have twelve additional positions that are being eliminated. There again, no one was laid off. These were vacant positions that were looked at and not filled and not budgeted for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen.
On those, how many of those were just contracted out?
I have, I have a detail of those.
Okay, great.
Positions later in the presentation that I'll go over, and if I miss it, if you would ask me again, but there's a slide there that goes over it. If that's not enough detail, I'd be glad to answer that for you. Now, council policies as it relates to the budget, the general fund maximum amount of appropriated fund balance is three percent. As you know, we aren't, do not have any appropriated fund balance in the general fund. Reoccurring expenditure should be financed with only reoccurring revenues, and except for the, the Army, the last piece of that, the Army proceeds, the sale of that, six hundred and fifty thousand, that will be done for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. The transfer from ESP to the general fund, the policy states shall not be more than fifteen percent of ESP revenues, it's right at fifteen percent. Fees should be set at level sufficient to recover all costs, and there are no fee increases in, in this budget. I know that there were a couple mentioned in comments that I've received from the public, and I've asked the departments to look at those. I think it was just really one at, at one of the centers or, or something like that, so when they discuss neighborhood services, they're going to go over that particular fee. Then the council reserve, minimum reserve of fifteen percent of general fund, beginning adopted appropriations, and that is at fifteen point nine percent. Then major objectives and, and goals that the mayor has set forth in the budget is creating economic opportunity, investing in neighborhoods, promoting a healthy environment, restoring trust and, and taking action, and under creating economic opportunity, the first is what we just discussed, the establishment of million-dollar Economic Development Incentive Fund, grow our city and, and tax base, accelerate the development of the airport commerce part, and investing in the port infrastructure, which the, the last two are ongoing issues that, that we're doing, and of course, the council has taken action already to help grow our tax base, and there, as those further opportunities come forth, we'll be continuing to do that. Investing in neighborhoods, the objectives is promote safety in attractive neighborhoods, strengthen relationships with neighborhoods, and, and I'm going to stop at the first one because I have really been impressed in just editorial comment since the Parks Department and Public Works has taken that over and issued those contracts out. There are two parks that I go by every day coming to work, and they, those individuals who have gotten those contracts have just done an excellent job. They, they look, I've lived where I live ever since I was born, and, and in the same neighborhood, and those parks are just really good. I mean, they're doing an excellent job, the, the vendors that have those. End of editorial comment. Keep streets and neighborhoods clean, establish a fund to encourage voluntary demolition, and that will be discussed as part of the presentation, and promote mixed income housing. All of these are the objectives that will be discussed as, as part of the presentations that, that various departments are giving. Promoting a healthy environment, completing energy audit of all city facilities you're here about, continue to transition the, the city fleet to natural gas, extend natural gas fueling stations to commercial fleet and individuals. All of these have been, have pretty well been started, the, the last two I mentioned, but ESP continues to look at opportunities to get involved in private areas, private fleets, and that type of thing, and, and we, we plan on continuing to do that. Improve water quality by enhancing stormwater management, that's been a very successful program in the city, and you'll hear Public Works speak about that. And implementation of the Green Building Code, which you heard last, committed a whole something about that and what they're looking at with that. And then restoring trust and taking action, continue to improve service delivery, improve delivery of public safety programs, seek innovation solutions to improve operations, establish an office of diversity, and address the city's unfunded pension liabilities and annual pension costs. You have heard about that. There, there's been comments, I know, I believe Ms. Mack made a comment concerning the establishment of the Office of Diversity and the timing of that. The mayor's office, and, and I too think it's, you can't get that going too quickly, and so they won't move forward with that as soon as possible. I think Ms. Mack's comments that we got last Friday were, "Do you do that before you get the diversity study?" And it, it's time to get that moving. That, that's a very important issue in this city, is to have someone specifically in charge of all the diversity issues, whether they're in the study or, or without the study. I think that's very important to get that going. And now, I'm transitioning into the financial overview for the city council. And citywide budget is two hundred and twenty-one million dollars, four hundred, two hundred and twenty-one million, four sixty-seven, eight hundred, that's your entire budget. It's about six hundred thousand dollars less than last year. The biggest part of, of the budget is your enterprise departments at forty-three point three-two percent, and then the general fund, and then the special revenue funds. But it just gives you a pie chart, a glance of the total city budget. And then, where the money goes, you see that most of it, where it comes from is from charges for services, and of course, that's mainly from your enterprise operations, some neighborhood services operations, but, well, you know, about half of it comes from there, and then the other comes from the other revenue sources within the city. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Parker, thank you, and I appreciate it. Could you get back to the slide before this one, please? Because I was, I was looking through the budget last night, I was on page five of the budget, and I saw other financing sources that was on revenues, and I don't know if, actually this did not, I was, I was reading an email and I kind of missed it, and I thought it was bottom back over. I guess we can get to that a little bit later. I, I don't see it up there, but, but, but I'll have some questions about the summary of revenues expenditure by function.
Okay.
Page five, and I apologize, I was shooting an email out. It's about other financing sources. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Where did the budget book gives this chart?
It, it's in the beginning, and I'll let my staff look at that, and they'll let me know where that is.
I'm sorry, one before.
It's not in the budget book, it's just one that we presented as a slide.
Can we get a copy to add?
A matter of fact, I'll hang these presentations so that council can, can see the, all the presentations will be up there. Yes, sir. I know some of them are hard to see, and I apologize for that. We try to do the best we can. And then where the, the money goes is also broken, broken down. Physical environment, which is your, your ESP sanitation mainly, it's about fifty-three million dollars or twenty-nine percent of the budget. The second is your public safety, which is about seventeen percent of thirty million dollars. The third is transportation, which is about fifteen percent or twenty-six million dollars. And then, your economic environment and your culture and recreation are about the same, at about seventeen million dollars apiece. And that's, that's just a overview. And then this slide I always use to compare the approved budget, what council approved in fiscal year twelve to fiscal year thirteen. The biggest change, I think you can see, is, and I'll just run down the revenues real quick, property tax we discussed going down a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars, franchise fees and utility taxes are down by two hundred and seventy-three thousand. The other revenue is the Army Reserve, that's where we, we put that, it's a change of about two million dollars. Personal services and operating expenditures in total went down a hundred and seventeen thousand. And then the next biggest that I have mentioned to council on the expenditure side is that transfer to the Tax and Franchise Fee Debt Service Fund. That payment no longer will be necessary, the last payment will be ten-one, and there's money that's been accumulated according to the, the bond documents and paid out on ten-one of twelve. So that, that's the, the last payment that we have, and then, of course, your budget was fifty point six million in the general fund, and it's reduced by almost two point four million dollars to forty-eight point two million is what we're looking at. And then discussing the, the projections as it relates to the revenue in the general fund, the proposed budget is down by a hundred and twenty-six or one point oh-five percent as far as revenue goes. Your state revenues are about even, has not changed, and then your franchise fees and utility tax revenues are down about one to two percent in the different revenue categories. The general fund budget is forty-eight point two million, and just the proposed decrease of two point four, mainly due to the Tax and Franchise Fee Debt Service Fund. The current general fund reserves are at seven point six million, and your ESP transfer is remaining at eight million. Capital equipment for the general fund departments is paid totally out of the penny for progress and was planned as, as part of that vote for the penny for progress, but a recap of that is seven hundred and fifty thousand on police vehicles and equipment, a hundred and fourteen thousand for neighborhood services, including golf and tennis, a hundred and sixty-one thousand for public work vehicles and equipment, and then seventy-nine hundred for other miscellaneous equipment. And then just looking at the general fund, the first chart you saw was dealing with the entire budget, but now taking those sources and looking at those sources as a percentage of just the general fund that reflects to that. The first revenue is twenty-three point eight percent is your avalon proceeds of about twelve million. Then the second is your state shared revenues, that's about eighteen point seven million, and that's your communication service tax, your half-cent sales tax, and your municipal revenue sharing, and then your franchise fees and are about eight point five million at about seventeen percent, and then the ESP transfer makes up about sixteen percent of the total revenues. And then behind that is your public service taxes at about thirteen percent. Yes, sir?
We've been talking with Gulf Power regarding franchise fees, et cetera, I believe. Does this reflect any increase or decrease or any projection as to what franchise fees might be with?
While you're in negotiations of the franchise fee, even in negotiations was not an issue, it was remaining where it was. I think there were some other issues dealing with the franchise that they're, were looking at with Gulf Power, so these revenues are consistent with the current franchise fee that we're charging to Gulf Power. Then just to go over some of the, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. Parker, I apologize, you go back to that next?
Yes, sir.
Previous screen. I'm trying to figure out, I'm on page five of the budget here on summary of revenues, and I'm trying to figure out, I was trying to match up that other financing sources, I think proposed forty million dollar plus, where that falls into this pie here. And if you could give me some explanation on that, I appreciate it. If you go to page five of your budget, it talks about other financing sources, and it's forty million dollars with no detail. I was just wondering what, what that, where that is, where that falls here, if I could get some explanation, thank you.
The, the other financing sources and revenue is, and I think it's only the, that's mainly to do with your transfers between, between the funds that we, that we have, but do you have the detail of that?
Yes, sir, if you look on page three, there's a detail by the fund, and half of that is from the internal service funds, that's where we actually put all of their revenue expenses, it's under other financing sources and other financing.
And you see in the general fund, eight mil, if you're on page three, and you see in the general fund, it's eight million dollars, that's your ESP transfer. It's mainly going to have to do with your transfers in and out of your funds. It's an accounting type issue, but it, it's where funds are moving between, revenue is moving between various funds.
And is it subtracted out in, in the use of funds as other financing uses?
Uses, right.
To basically?
It's how we have to present it.
It's an internal swirling thing?
Right. The, the difference in the transfers in and out, I think the best way, we would, we'll just provide council a total list of those transfers in and out. We do that in the CAFR, you know, there, in the notes to the CAFR, there, there's a separate breakout, but I'll provide that to council so that they can see the breakout between the financing sources and uses.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
There was a movement by a state legislator last year to cut down on the business tax, and I believe it was spearheaded by a group that was concerned, and had multiple people within our organization. I believe that they were able to bring it back, but I still have to keep an eye on it because it really would have a significant impact on the revenue if it goes through.
Yes, so that's, that's one of the things I have been looking at and talking with the financial advisor about, and the bond council, and we had to do it with a revenue source that only the city of Pensacola had, and it was like amusement tax or something like that. You may have been on council when we had to deal with that. And we, it was pledged on an old bond issue when we refunded, then they tried to take it back away from us. It might have been the one cent local dealer tax, something like that, and then we just pledged it to, we did a resolution, pledged it to a bond issue. So most likely, if something like that occurs, we would try to save that by, by doing a resolution, pledging that specifically to, to one of the bond issues. You have a general covenant to budget and appropriate on a couple of, on a couple of your bond issues, and that's not specific enough to protect that revenue, but it would protect the revenue if they did something with that, at least till the bond issue was paid off. And, and that gave us, I know back there when we did it for that, the revenue pledged to the port, it gave us about five years in order to know that that was going away.
And I'm just going to throw out something in general on the business license tax. I, I think that is something we ought to be looking at, whether we want to change some of that. I, I know enough people that, that are my friends, who are generally fine-upstanding citizens, who just are like, I'm who just are like, "I'm just not going to pay that." I don't have, you know, and I've had a lot of people ask me, "Okay, an architect is 200, a realtor 75." I look up some just out of curiosity. Psychiatrist is 200, psychologist 75, and astrologer's 200. It's a really nonsensical tax.
What was that, astrolog?
Astrologers and psychiatrists are similar, psychologists, I don't know. And it's very hard to figure out if you're a new business. When I first got on council, I asked about it, and I was told that we tell businesses that they pay it for the pleasure of doing business in the city, but it's a pleasure for us to have them do business in the city. And so I think that is something I'd like the council to consider looking at carefully and maybe start phasing out, especially in light of what's going on in the state and their interest in getting rid of it.
Well, if I may respond, the other side of the coin is that if you have a business, then you have fire protection you need to provide, you have police protection you have to provide, and the tax helps offsets that because you have somebody come in with a building and there's not, nothing there, and all of a sudden there's a need to provide those services where there wasn't.
But then with businesses having, they don't...
You're sitting at the mic, please.
Yeah. They don't get to homestead for avalorum, so they are already paying a larger percentage, a larger share of their avalorum taxes. So we'll debate that another day, but I just wanted to put it out there for us to consider.
And then in your millage rate history, just to give you a 10-year history of that, the millage rate in '06 was 5.05, took a drop to about 4.5, 4.6 for a couple of years, and then currently for the last two years is at 4.2895. And then the valuations, just a comparison, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I thought it was interesting to look at '08 before the impact of what happened nationally into the economy. The total city valuation has decreased 12%. And then when you break that down between the CRA-TIF area, it has declined by about 14.5%. And then that leaves a net city valuation after you take the TIF out, and it has reduced about 12.5%. So total valuations, I think everybody's aware of it, a property has continued to decline, but the decline has been slower. Each year, the decline is less. So that's the positive, I guess you could say, about the valuation and the revenue as it relates to the property valuation. And then this is depicting the percentage change in property valuation. You know, the hurricane occurred in '04, and you see what happened shortly after the rebuilding and that type of thing, up to a total change of 23.65 in '07. And this just depicts what I was mentioning about the changes, and then it started declining, and it has declined ever since '08. Property tax revenue, of course, follows that, millage has a part of that, it's not just valuation. So when you apply the millage since '08, the value, the gross values went down 19% and the CRA has went down 21%. And this chart's just a historical chart that reflects, you know, pick one big department in the city, police department, it could have been fire, it could have been public works, whatever, but we've historically used the police department and the change in value. So over the last 10 years, we're, you know, 673,000 in growth in the avalorum, but yet the police department budget has changed by 5 million. Weather-related revenues, and that was part of the decline for this year that you took action on because of the weather-sensitive nature of our revenues, it does affect our franchise fees, utility taxes, and to some extent, the half-cent sales tax is also affected, you know, with the money we get with tourists and that type of thing. So, you know, over half your budget is in the general fund is based on variable revenues. And just to depict some of those and the growth of those and what's happening recently, it's sort of leveled off. You can see, looking at '11, '12, and '13, not much growth, not much growth projected in those areas. The other is the half-cent sales tax, little bit growth, but for all practical purposes, it's about even or a little less than was projected last year. Communication services tax, the same way, little to no growth in those revenues. Municipal revenue sharing, the same thing, little or no growth. And it's just a function of the economy. I mean, that's where we are, it's a function of that, just wanted to show council those few slides to depict that. And then the general fund uses, by function, between public safety and culture and recreation, that's 80% of your budget. The other is split between there. Public safety is about 29 million, and culture and recreation's about 7.7 million. Then by classification, your personal services, operating agencies and transfers, your biggest, of course, is your personal services budget. And that is, and will continue to be the biggest part of the budget. And therefore, when we're looking at reductions like we had this year in revenue and that type of thing, that's why we're very careful on managing the personal services part of the budget. And that's why the pension issue's such a big issue, because it's a big part of those personal services. Of the 67.05, your personal services is 34 million, your pension's about 8.2 million of that, or about 23% of the 34 million. So it's a big part of the personal services, looking into that. And that, of course, is why that's being addressed.
Could you clarify, what's agency on that?
Agency funding is your outside agencies that you want to discuss. And then your position changes, Councilwoman Pratt, this hopefully will answer your question. If not, I'd ask more details after I get through with this. The fiscal year 2012 beginning budget had 842 positions. We're reducing 12 position in '13. And we actually, that's a net number, we actually deleted those positions up there, a clerk one in finance, a maintenance worker in neighborhood services, 14 positions due to the performance contract, and one automotive equipment mechanic at the golf course. Now, the changes, and these will be discussed by the various departments as they come forward, is the three professional firefighters have been added to the positions, and then the last two positions have to do with the contract that the city has with the CNPA and running the special events for CNPA and the parking management agreement at the CNPA. So it nets us at 830 positions that are budgeted for fiscal year 2013. Did that answer most of your questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Is that page in here in this big book, or is that just part of your slide?
It's in verbiage, it's a slide, and like I said, I'll hang the slides so that council can get to them.
Who did that?
We can hang mine when I get through this afternoon. Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Would I be correct in saying that the staff's been reduced since, I believe, 2005 by about 160 positions?
Yes, sir, I'd have to ask you, that, to look at that specifically, but we had like 1,000 and something positions at one time, I'm not sure that was 2005, and now we're down to 830.
We've been doing it so gradually, I don't know if the public realizes that we've reduced that number in that amount of time. Those, you want to put that back up, please?
Yes, sir.
Those 14 positions in public work, were they, has come up, were anybody in those positions?
No, sir. As a matter of fact, they're still working through that, as I understand it, there's two or three that they still have, and it was based on projections for retirements and that type of thing before the end of September. But no one was laid off, no, sir.
The administrative officer working special events at CNPA and the special events supervisor, is there a rationale as to why we're funding that and not the CNPA?
It's billed back, it's billed back to them, the neighborhood services, the city neighborhood services department, and they will speak to that as part of their presentation, there's a couple of slides on that. But they did a contract with the CNPA, the CNPA put out a bid for one that public works responded to, one that neighborhood services responded to. The CNPA awarded those bids to those, so this was identified as part of their cost, but it has to run through our books in order to, and then it's billed back to them. And as a matter of fact, the program's working pretty well, and you'll see that on the slide, just to give you a heads up. Right now, we're at a positive on the neighborhood services side. I don't believe those positions have been filled at this point, and they're trying to do those currently with existing staff, but as that continues on, they're looking at possibly filling those positions. But they were added because they were part of the contract, so we need to get authorization. Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, just talk, okay. Yeah, and my questions were about the administrative officer in special events. I was just kind of, and you kind of started answering some of that, I was wondering where we're at in that process, if that would be an advertised position, that will be, you know, advertised, looking for those positions to be filled, or how would that process work, where we're at in that process, et cetera.
It depends, I know when David Flaherty was here, we were trying to work with existing staff to do that. You know, it's a startup business for the city, too, it's a startup business for the CNPA. So before getting permanent people on, they were trying to allow existing staff to do that. I'm not quite sure what their schedule is for that, but when neighborhood services is here and doing their presentation, if you ask them, they may be able to give you an update of that on where that is.
So we don't have anybody in mind right now for those positions?
There are people currently performing those functions. That is existing staff, and I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question, if we have anybody in mind. You know, I'm for trying to use existing staff as much as possible, and if we have to hire somebody new, we would do that.
Thank you.
Well, like, you're going to get into it later on, or somebody will, specifically regarding the DIB and the monies that we allocate toward, DIB and the monies that they collect via the market, what do they possibly collect for the Pelican drop? And I think in the past, if I'm wrong, you can tell me, that we funded that, but I think it has been taken over by DIB in this particular budget. Are there any items that are addressing funds, loring toward that, or we've released it and that the DIB took care of in the past?
Yes, sir. That would best be described by Ryan when she does the presentation on CRA. She goes through the contracts that, those contracts that you're mentioning and those events that occur, she's more familiar with those, but those are part of her presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we ever go to, like, who's going to be presenting what?
Yes, ma'am, it was on the agenda. If you don't have one, I'll have someone get you one, it's in the back, I know.
Okay, I didn't see it on the city's website, but I...
Yes, ma'am.
There is, I saw the announcement, but I don't know.
Gastonia's getting you one, she'll give it to you, see the schedule, yes, ma'am.
Do you look on Rick's blog, too?
I think it was, it could have been misleading, that front first page you looked at, out of one out of four, that first page, it just says, "Your standard committee of the whole format," and it just said, "Budget workshop," and then if you scroll, you'll see the schedule.
And just to go with the reserves, again, projected to increase very little this next year.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and it's going to, we're going to run this at council's pleasure, but we're approaching the time limit for this section of the budget. It'd be my interest to keep us as close to schedule as possible. If we need a third day, we can come back and tie up a whole bunch of loose ends. About how much more do you have, Mr. Parker?
I think just two more slides, sir.
Okay.
And I'll be done. Just to show you the ESP transfer, it went from 7.5 to 8 million in '09 and continues at that level. And with that, to remind council that the public hearing dates are September 5th at 5:15 and September 12th at 5:15 for the second public hearing in council chambers. And with that, Mr. President, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Dr. Booth?
Yes, Mr. Parker, a minute ago when I asked about the chart, what I should have started with was to thank you for the fine job you do, you and your staff, y'all do an incredibly fine job. I just happen not to see it, and I probably should have called you afterwards and asked for it rather than saying anything in the meeting, but it does not detract from my admiration for the fine job you and your office do for the city.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. And with that, Mr. President, with the next presentation, you can come up and...
Okay, great. Welcome, Ms. Kuchera.
Good morning. Thank you, President Hall and council members, for the opportunity to share some exciting enhancements in human resources coming in FY '13. The first enhancement I'd like to talk to you today about is the creation of an employee training academy. And to quote Benjamin Franklin, "Without continual growth and progress, such words as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning." By the implementation of this training curriculum, it is our goal that we provide the opportunity for continual growth and progress to every employee to improve, achieve, and to succeed. The Pensacola Employee Training Academy will provide basic knowledge of the city organization, policies and procedures, laws and regulations, and develop professional and technical skills for our employees. It's a multi-level curriculum, and the first level will be a city core basic, and this is level one. These are courses that we recommend that all city employees complete. And as you can see, it's different types of courses such as new employee orientation, which we do every two weeks on a continuing basis, harassment discrimination, city's policies and procedures, ethics and standard of conduct, drug-free workplace policy, and bloodborne pathogen training and first aid are things that we have to do, that are mandated to us to do. The second level is an intermediate level, and these are more specialized policy and skill courses. And a lot of the employees that will be taking these courses will be your supervisors, and of course, it will be open to any employee who wishes to take the courses. And some of the courses that you listed are things such as progressive discipline, valuing diversity, supervisory training, wellness, lunch and learns that we will be providing. The third level is a more advanced level. These type of courses will be job-specific and more technical. This level is recommended for your higher-level supervisors and managerial positions, and they'll be available using outside vendors, webinars, conferences, and seminars. There's no doubt that everyone benefits from training, and here are the few of the reasons how we can all win with such a program. Of course, we all want to improve the quality and the quantity of work. We want to provide skills for our employees so that they can achieve and have a higher level of performance. We want to assist our employees in their personal development and their professional advancement, and we want to provide our employees skills to respond to the average and we want to provide our employees skills to respond to the ever-changing demand from the citizens, and it also significantly limits the city's liability risk. The next enhancement that we would like to present, I'm going to let Suzanne Humphrey, she's the Assessment and Development Manager, and she will be going over the new web-based staffing solution that we are hoping to put in place.
Thank you very much. I wanted to talk with you about NeoGov, which is our new workforce staffing solution. It's a system that actually automates the staffing process from the time the department initiates a requisition to fill a vacant position. It continues through the recruitment process and the examination process and actually ends with the hiring decision. It is designed specifically for public sector, which is, it's great for us. We have unique selection process that we use in the public sector, which actually starts with the application, and it follows through with the screening of qualifications. We conduct and administer and score examinations, and then finally certify an eligible list. It is a hosted internet-based solution, which means that all the data is hosted and maintained on NeoGov servers, which prevents the need for the city to house the data on our servers. And one of the most important aspects of NeoGov for us is that it will eliminate some of the outdated system problems that we currently face. We have a program that is, we use for requisitioning, that is no longer supported by MRS staff. And the second problem that we are facing is that we have a DOS-based 20-year-old system that we are using that is no longer compatible with our operating systems. And it's easy access for users. The fact that it's web-based makes it very easy for both our internal and external customers to use. There are lots of benefits for this program, and we are excited about those. The first of which is we allow, it allows applicants to apply online. They'll complete an electronic application, which means no paper copies. It also allows applicants to sign into their account, and they can check their status of their application as it moves through the selection process. It allows for electronic notifications to be made, which is great. Applicants will receive notices from us via email rather than snail mail, which obviously saves us time and money. Applicants can electronically schedule their interviews. When they schedule examinations, they can access their account online, schedule themselves for interviews, and through the use of a self-s scheduler, which is actually great. It prevents some staff need to contact and notify individually for each of those applicants. It automates the process of initial screening of qualifications. One of the things we do after we've accepted an application is we are responsible for screening that applicant to make sure that they meet the qualifications for the position. And this allows our subject matter experts to sign onto an account, review those applications electronically, without the need for printing those paper copies. It provides for examination scoring and statistical analyses, which is great. NeoGov provides the capability of machine-scoring exams and providing statistical reports based on those exams. Eligible lists are certified electronically, again eliminating the need for paper copies. And lastly, the appointing authorities can actually make selections and generate letters from the system to the applicants automatically. And that's an overview of NeoGov, and we are excited definitely about this program, the problems that it's going to correct for us, and especially the added value and customer service that it'll provide for both our internal and external customers.
Other than the electronic process, do you have another process where you announce positions or maybe newspaper or anything of that nature?
You mean regarding advertising, Mr. Townsley?
Or you have a try to fill a position?
Yes, sir. We'll continue the same process of advertising in the news journal, and we typically use the independent voice. We post them on our website and also use other websites as needed for professional positions.
This is just another means of what I'm doing.
Yes, sir. This is more of an applicant tracking and actually a process that'll automate our system from beginning to end, which we do not have now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a network of NeoGov users that you'll be able to pull from, or is it, I mean, this kind of bypasses the whole idea of consolidating services even, because it's all automated and it's a completely separate function?
It's a great process. There are a lot of users. It's actually the number-one public-sector applicant-tracking system. And there are a lot of users in Florida, have colleagues in Escamie County and Ocaloosa County that are users, and they highly recommended this.
I love the paperless concept. We need to be paperless.
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Green.
Dick says going green. Yes.
Before you leave that item, NeoGov, how does that translate into either a saving or expense? And how does it translate into the budget? I mean, does it save us money? Is it going to cost us money initially? How does it fit in with the budget?
I haven't actually done a cost analysis. What happened to us is we are facing those two issues that I noted in there. A requisition program, which is in an access database that MIS staff can no longer support, and so that was going away for us. And with the addition of Windows 7 on our servers, our DOS-based 20-year-old program that we were using for applicant tracking was no longer compatible. So that's how the process actually started. We were asked by administration to let them know of any problems that we foresaw for our future, and that was one of the things that we brought up, and so it's sort of transitioned into that.
Okay.
But in addition, it certainly does save costs in the fact that we can do this process electronically rather than print and copy and mail manually.
And Ms. Myers, the, you know, the, I don't, have you started implementing this yet? We're just starting on the verge.
Right. We had requested this for the FY13 budget, and then administration graciously allowed us to implement.
The mayor wanted to move forward on this immediately. So this, the expenditure and to get it started, he thought was very important. Just go ahead and jump on.
What was that expenditure?
The annual cost for NeoGov is 10.6, $10,600 annually.
Okay. And where is that reflected here in the budget? What item would it be reflected under?
It's included in our staffing function, but there was also a line item in the enhancement.
It should be in, and I haven't looked. Evette's looking, too. It should be in Other Contractual Services is normally where those type of expenses are.
Under Professional Services?
Other contractual. 9357.
What was, Other Contractual Services?
Could you use the mic, please, so we...
Okay. I see that line item 9357, Other Contractual Services, one up from 2000 in 2012 to 12,600 for 2013.
That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it?
That's the annual maintenance.
Okay. I had a question about that, so I kind of thought that's where it might be.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what that is.
So, next to that line, I'm going to put NeoGov.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that's not all of it, but any what else is part of it.
That's the majority of that.
Primarily, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have one final question. On page 160, your program costs, the general fund portion, this is zeroed out, the first parts and the new, that's just new descriptions because you've done away with civil service?
That's correct.
All right.
That's reorganization.
And so there's really, the page 160, it's just when we switch from civil service, that the lines are all zeroed out for the proposed budget, and it's new descriptions. But it's almost a wash, within a couple thousand dollars, it looks like.
Right.
Of function is still the same cost, it's just a different name.
That's correct. The civil service used to have a tab, and it was combined with human resources. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I ask about the additional training program? I like the idea of getting everybody trained. I see that training goes up about $15,000. That'll be billed back to the departments for all of their employees who get trained?
The initial training of the 15,000 that's in the employee service or human resources budget, if there's any excess of that, it will be billed back. Otherwise, they will bill back the necessary. Those are the beginning costs to get the trainer in and that type of thing.
Okay, okay. And then I see that the salary goes down from last year's budget, and maybe it's because of the merging with civil service and other things, but I see it goes down $70,000. What happened?
I'd like Cheryl to explain.
Yes, it does. Because we have one less position, we combine positions and we reorganize, so we saved the money through...
And so we've reduced people, and now we're adding this training. Who's getting training? I mean, that's a lot of work for one person to do. What are, who's getting that dumped on them?
Well, we will be, we will collectively be training, and we do have, since we have a contract with Landrum, who provide, you know, extra personal services to us, they provide training for us at no cost because of the contract, so they will be coming in, we'll take advantage of that. And then three of us in our department will be doing some of the training, which we're already doing some of it. And then we're going to have outside vendors to come in and do some of it.
And is that in the training budget?
Yes.
Or is that?
That's part of, that's the $16,000 that we have in the new budget for training.
Okay, that's for the outside.
To pay for those vendors that come in.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think Counsel will recall that when we went through the budget, the mayor was very concerned about the training that has been not being done.
There's not been.
I guess, except absolute required training. And he wanted to move forward in this budget and reestablishing part of that. And so this is an overall effort to get that reestablished.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question again about the training? Because I had a question mark next to that. Is that going to be an ongoing item, for instance, in the next budget year? I mean, is this...
We would like for it to be, but, you know, when budgets have to be cut, usually the first thing that is cut is training. So that's what happened. We had zero money for training for a while, and now we're putting money back in there. The mayor's trying to be proactive. He knows that we need to put this back in our budget. So we're starting at this point, and hopefully we can keep it in there from year to year.
I do think it's a good item, and I do know that Landrum, for instance, gives excellent training, so that's a benefit we get from them when we contract with them, is the benefit of some really good training. So, okay, I was just wondering if that's something, hopefully we're going to continue.
The mayor's goal is that it is to continue in the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. ESP, Ms. Suarez.
Are we through with, can I ask them one other, a few other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask you, do you know right off the top of your head how many Landrum employees we have contracted for?
And let me clarify that.
Not just Landrum.
Right, that's what I was...
Yeah, we do business with some other agencies.
Yeah, there's other agents. You're talking about for all the outside agencies.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And you bring that up, and while they're looking for that number, I will tell you that there was a change that we made, actually, at the close of '11 due to an audit we had. It's the first audit we had with FRS coming through and looking at things. And all of our outside-agency-type people and employees that were hired directly that we considered extra personal services, it was line item 9125. We needed to separate those out for that audit purposes. So now, the 9125 is all your outside-type agencies.
9125.
25. That'd be all your outside agencies consistent through the budget. And there's various ones depending on the contract we have with each of the agencies. And do y'all have a total we can get that for?
We don't have a total.
We can get that total for you by department.
Okay, that would really be nice.
Yes, ma'am.
And just one other question I have. Do you hire workers by the day? In other words, day labor, people who would be classified as day laborers by the day?
Not very often. If there is something out of the ordinary that happens, such as the fish kill that we had in Bayou Tahar, that's when we go and we would have to do something like that. But normally, we don't hire them just by the day.
Okay.
It could be, it could be seasonal, like we could be hiring them for a few months during the summer to do certain things. But usually, day-to-day laborers, we don't have that here in the city.
Okay. Well, temporary would be the same thing as day laborers.
Yeah, we call them temporary employees, but they don't, but when you say day laborers, that's a term that I would use as, they're working just from day to day, or they may just be here for a few days, but...
But you do have temporary...
We do have temporary employees, for sure, yes, through our agencies.
That work by the day until you don't need...
Until we no longer need them, yes. Until they, maybe there's a project that needs to be done, and we're hiring them just to help finish that project.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
Welcome, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Council, I'm pleased to present to you the 2013 budget for Pensacola Energy. And if I could take just a minute to talk about our new name, I think it's going to be a very successful change. Those of you that have been around here for a few decades, like I have, may remember the kickoff of the former name of the company, Energy Services of Pensacola, back around 32, 34 years ago. There were a number of billboards around town that identified, or that said ESP is coming, something of that nature. There was radio commercials, TV commercials, and all that sort of thing. Created quite a buzz around town. The media picked up on it. It was really a successful kickoff. In fact, as I recall, Steve Garman, the city manager at the time, I wasn't working here, but I've been told all these things, was concerned that the public would be disappointed when they found out it was simply the gas company changing its name. So he was thinking about pulling the kickoff. But he didn't, and it was a very successful kickoff. After that time, several things happened. The ECUA was formed, a company called Energy Systems Heating and Air Conditioning became a local provider of services, and a new television station called ESPN was created. And during the years that followed, a lot of confusion ensued with our name. Any of our employees can tell you that hardly a week goes by that someone doesn't think they work for ECUA or Energy Systems, or they say, they talk about ESP, and they certainly don't think we work for the television station, but the confusion is certainly there. So with the mayor's efforts to rebrand the city, this was a great opportunity for us to rebrand ESP and rename ESP to Pensacola Energy, and I think it's going to be a very positive change for us. First of all, we'll go to our organization chart. You'll see some areas highlighted in yellow there. Those aren't really changes. We simply moved things around a little bit to better give you an idea of how the organization's structured. We did have a change in the position of area manager, and as a result, some of the functions that he had previously came with him because he's just very good at that, measurement being a major one. But basically, there's no new positions and no substantial changes to the organization of Pensacola Energy. This is our budget, and you certainly have an easier-to-read copy of this with a lot more detail, but I think the main message here is that most of the numbers went down, including revenue. Revenue's down because gas costs are down, so of course, our expenses are down as well. Revenue's down because gas costs are down, so of course, our expenses are down as well. But also, our personal services expenses are down, operating expenses and capital. It's still a very robust budget, and we expect to get a lot accomplished during this coming year. And as I go through the presentation, I'll think you'll see some pretty interesting opportunities for the growth of Pensacola Energy. These are the highlights. This is the stuff I'll cover. There's no point in me reading through this. We'll just dive right in. Gas costs, as you can see, have been on a roller coaster ride for several years now, but are trending strongly downward, and we think are probably going to level off somewhat at the rate they're at right now. They're probably going to blip up over the next year or two, but nothing like back in the middle of the last decade. There's a lot of things that contribute to this. Shale gas, as you've heard from us before, is prolific in this country and is being widely produced, and it's really been a game changer for our industry. So much so that we're seeing industries that relocated offshore a couple of decades ago, they're moving back to the United States, thanks in large part to the decrease in cost of gas. But we're also seeing new opportunities, such as compressed natural gas vehicles, NGVs as they're often called. And certainly, we're seeing a lot of success in Pensacola that I'll talk more about shortly. We're also still working towards completing a prepaid gas purchasing arrangement that you're aware of. You approved that two, three months ago. It's been delayed because the economics have not been there. The closing has been delayed, but we hope to complete that in the near future. As we've discussed, the gas prices have declined thanks to the shale gas advent, and supply and demand still controls a lot of what the gas costs do. But frankly, the range of movement between gas costs has narrowed significantly, which gives our customers a much more level playing field when it comes to their energy supply. Things could change that. Liquified natural gas exporting is being talked about, and is happening to a small extent. If it becomes a big part of the natural gas supply picture here in the United States, exporting it to other countries, then certainly, that could impact the supply-demand picture and therefore, pricing. Coal-fired power plants are becoming a thing of the past much more rapidly than the energy industry expected. In fact, I think it was last month, natural gas actually produced more electricity than coal did for the first time ever. So that trend.
Please share that historical milestone.
I believe it was last month was the first time ever that natural gas-fired electric generation was a larger part of the supply picture than coal. Certainly, water and wind and those kind of things still contribute to electric generation. But that's huge, because electric generating plants are huge consumers of natural gas. It hasn't impacted the price at this point, but it certainly could if it continues to grow, and probably will continue to grow at a very rapid pace. As you're aware, we asked council to implement a new clause in our rates a couple of years ago for infrastructure replacement and cost recovery. This was important because the Public Service Commission allowed us to shift the way we manage our infrastructure, our aging infrastructure. For decades now, we've been conducting an electrical survey, which basically tests the electrical current underground to see how it's affecting our aging pipelines and causing, possibly causing corrosion. It works, but it's a very ineffective and inefficient way to manage your system. So what we proposed to the Public Service Commission was to allow us to replace this electrical survey activity, which took a couple of creams and quite a bit of time, with direct assessment. In other words, we dig up our pipe, we look at it, which is a better way to tell whether it's in good shape or not. And when we locate sections that are in bad shape, that's not the only time we do it, digging it up. Sometimes we just discover leaks. But when we discover areas that are in bad shape, we replace them. This has led us to a much better plan for dealing with the issue, because frankly, they're going to have to replace it sooner or later, and some of it is sooner, not later. Quite a bit of it, as a matter of fact. As we've done this, we've reported our findings to the Public Service Commission on a quarterly basis. They have so far agreed with what we are doing in order to deal with the issue, and we are ramping up infrastructure replacement to the tune of $1 million expenditures per year, which we expect to continue for next several years. Hopefully, inflation won't impact this amount much, and we'll be able to get a lot of work done. As you can see, there's a list of projects underway now. We just are letting the bids for these projects. And we hope to have these accomplished before the end of 2013, as we develop new projects Okay, customer count, that's always an important part of the picture for a company like ours. And just a little history here. The last decline in customer count before the new millennium was back in around 1979, 1980. And it was due to reduction, forced reduction by the councils at the time, in fact, elimination of marketing. And we just weren't marketing our product, and down went the customer count to a negative number. It was positive every year until 2003, after that, once we reinstituted the marketing budget, until Hurricane Ivan hit. Hurricane Ivan took out a number of our customers' homes. Without going into a long description, a lot of things happened there after the homes were eliminated. We had a ramp-up in construction activity, replacing homes, but frankly, they were in such a frenzy to get homes built that many builders did not include gas piping, because the plumbers just were simply too busy to install the gas piping in many cases. Afterwards, the Great Recession took hold. We saw flat growth, and now we're suffering from a decline in our customer count due to the aftermath of the, both the hurricane, I think, is a little bit lingering. But certainly, the recession is still affecting us. New home starts are beginning to show signs of life, and we're hopeful that we'll see that turnaround. But we're taking a lot of action to help it turn around, frankly. As you recall, the council allowed us to get into the piping business immediately after the hurricane. When the recession took hold, the plumbers complained, and rightfully so. They had very little business. Frankly, I don't think it was our fault that they didn't have business, it was simply the recession. But we did suspend the piping program, and we saw a continued decline in burner tips added afterwards. We're back in piping now, utilizing local plumbers. It's a much better relationship rather than the contentious one in the past, and I think we'll see a return to positive numbers in the near future. We're doing a number of things, as you know. We've changed advertising agencies. We cut a special deal with Blad TV, where we have our cooking show, and we've had it for many, many years, Coastal Cooking. We've also added a free TV show called Energy Talk, which allows us to do various topics on energy, and they're spread out in their sort of available time. They don't have a time slot sold, so they just give it to us. And it's a very positive and economical opportunity for us to get exposure for Pensacola Energy. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. Is there, is there any effort in trying to grow our customer base? Recently, we had a, you know, we all know about the issue about City of Gulf Breeze moving on to Santa Rosa Island. Is there any efforts of looking at areas, maybe that's close to us, that we have an opportunity to go into that market? Any thought in that direction?
Well, Councilman, that's a good question. There's often some comments about the North End, meaning north of Ten Mile Road, and how developed we are up there. We're in place to serve virtually any area that begins to develop in the North End, and that's certainly the growth area in the future for Scamby County. We've pretty well saturated the Southwest, which was our biggest growth area for many years. And we're in place to get to any new subdivisions. I'll talk a little, in a little bit, about an acquisition we're about to make that will put us in even better position to serve those areas. But we're always aggressively looking for opportunities to develop that, those areas that we are not currently serving. There are subdivisions that we do not serve at all, that were developed during the total electric boom in the 70s, and we didn't run the gas pipes there. And we're beginning to move into those areas a little bit at a time, but you really have to do an economic analysis to determine the feasibility, because it's so expensive to develop once those homes are built. The roads are in, the driveways are in, and it's just expensive construction.
I would encourage any effort in that regard, trying to develop new markets. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Suarez, I was just curious, based on Mr. Johnson's question, but from the Century Line South, are they doing a lot of propane on that part of the county, or who services that area?
Century has, the town of Century has a small system, and they serve almost to McDavid. We serve up to McDavid now. We serve the sawmill when it's operational, unfortunately. It's shut down still since the downturn in the economy. But the town of Century does have some customers. We serve virtually all the way to the Alabama line, a few customers, but it's just very sparse population. There is some propane up there, but for the most part, folks have converted over the years.
Thank you.
Customer retention and growth. As you can see, we had quite an impact on revenues this past year that was weather-driven. While we do have components in the rake that help us flatten out the impact that weather has on us, both in colder-than-normal winters and in warmer-than-normal winters, it still has an impact, because it's a big part of our business. This past winter was the warmest in a long time. I don't know when it was this warm. As you can see, the year 2011 was around 1,600 heating degree days. Heating degree days, by the way, are, is just a mathematical calculation that the National Weather Service does to gauge what kind of weather you have, whether it's cooling degree days or heating degree days. 2010 is, excuse me, 2011 is normal. 2010 is certainly colder than normal, and 12 was far warmer than normal, warmer than we've had in many, many years. And it, and it had an impact. We're going to be fine. We're going to, recovering much of that lost revenue, or missed revenue, I should say, not lost, due to weather, through our weather normalization adjustment. But it does, does still have an impact. We're also working hard to add burner tips. Frankly, those new burner tips that are added are helpful in many, many ways, because replacement burner tips, where customers take out, say, an old water heater, an old floor furnace, and put in a new, more efficient furnace, hurt us, because we actually lose load when that happens. But it's good for the customers, and it certainly makes it more affordable, and it's the right thing to do for the environment. Nevertheless, we need to continue to market and grow and add burner tips. And we spend about roughly $200 per new burner tip per year. I think we spent a little less this past year in marketing dollars, in advertising dollars, to add those new burner tips. And it's critical that we continue to do that, in order to avoid losing market share. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Suarez, thanks. How's your record on your weather normalization adjustment? And what period of, or what span of time are you able to look at? And the reason I ask is, I imagine it's a little bit like entering a casino. I mean, there's, you're playing your odds. And given the significant differential this past winter, have you pushed for a, has that affected your calculations?
It's affected.
So that we don't have quite the same sticker shock?
Yes, sir. It has affected our calculations in a couple ways. First of all, it's extended the time it's taken us to recollect, or to collect the weather normalization amount that we missed and that we budgeted for this past year. So in other words, we're going to be collecting that amount all the way through the entire fiscal year. It'll probably run into August and September before we finally reach the level that we had projected. That's one impact. That's the first time that's happened, because obviously, the warm weather was more than normal. The other impact it will have is those numbers for the weather normalization role over the course of an entire year. And so while we will continue to collect those, or finish collecting those dollars in this fiscal year, we'll start over again in the next fiscal year at a new normal rate. And hopefully, you know, it adjusts upward and downward. So if we get colder-than-normal winter, or months even, it doesn't have to be the entire winter, certain months, will be a return to the customers and a discount through the weather normalization adjustment.
Thanks.
I hope that answered your question. All right. Some of the newer ventures that we're entering into, the first that we'll talk about is home warranties. This is a vendor-administered program, administered program, in which we allow them to use our branding and our customer lists. They solicit customers to sign up for this program at a cost of about $4 or $5 a month. And for that, in return, they get, there's certainly rules that go along with this, but they get maintenance of their gas appliances. And we're hoping that this will improve our customer service level. One of the issues that we deal with at Pensacola Energy is the gap we have between our customers and the folks that we depend on to maintain appliances, to install gas piping, to install new appliances, and the company. And that gap is where we lose control of the quality of the service that the customers receive. Many times, it's very good, but sometimes it's not. Sometimes, you know, when you have a lot of independent people working, you have folks that tend, that sometimes take advantage of customers. You have folks that sometimes don't show up when they're supposed to show up. The quality of the work sometimes isn't what it should be. Certainly, most of the time, I'm sure it goes very, very well. But anytime we can become part of that contact with the customer, we try to do that. This is an opportunity for us to do so. We have some control over the company that will be doing this work, and they'll use local contractors, and they're going to use those that work closely with us, certainly not exclusively, but we are providing those names that do good work, as far as we know. And we'll actually make a little money off of this. I think the first year, we'll make around $15,000. It'll ramp up to the $50,000 to $75,000 range, if they're as successful as we hope in developing their business. Gas piping partnership. We've made you aware that we've gone back into this business. It's vital that we become back involved with our customers in the piping business, so we can really keep a handle on what kind of service they receive. What we'll do is, when our customers call and say, hey, I need a new water heater, we'll go out and price the job for them, sign them up. We'll assign one of the plumbers that's working with us in the program. Right now, we have six. We expect more to come onboard before we start, or as we get involved in the program. And we'll assign one of those six plumbers. They'll go out and do the work. They didn't have to bother to make a trip to do the quote, they just had to go do the work. And then we'll bill the customer, collect the money, and pay the plumber. So they're excited about it. We think it's going to be a good opportunity for us to work in partnership with local providers and improve the service level for our customers. We'll also do a little bit of limited piping work on our own for various things, like emergency situations. Say if a customer calls us on a Friday at 5:00, and their water heater is leaking, we may go out and install a temporary water heater, and then next week, the following week, assign the plumber to go out and put the permanent installation in. Or in some cases, we have sponsorship opportunities, where we can get a good exposure for Pensacola Energy. And sometimes, that involves in-kind sponsorship. Maybe there's some piping work of some sort that we can do to facilitate that sponsorship and get some very low-cost exposure for the company.
May I ask a question? Now, what type of plumbing are they going to be doing besides installing gas appliances?
Just, just gas work. Other than when the water heater installation goes in, and there's some water lines that have to be hooked up, but we don't do water and sewer work at all. Now, the plumbers do, of course. They may, they'll be allowed and encouraged to add on additional services to our customers that.
That's what I'm talking, I'm talking about.
Sure.
Is what type of plumbing are these contractors we've contracted with going to be doing? Actually installing gas lines?
Yes, ma'am. And water heaters. Primarily water heaters.
Okay.
But we're, the great thing about our staff selling the jobs to our customers is that they will add burner tips. They will encourage that customer, you know, we're running this gas line for this new water heater. If we do another five feet of gas pipe, you can have a gas grill out here, natural gas grill, instead of that propane tank. And our guys will do that. The plumbers aren't inclined to think that way, because they're interested in getting labor dollars. They don't care if it's gas, or water, or sewer, or what. They just want to make money off labor. And they don't think about the burner tips like we do.
Now, what if I have an emergency with my hot water heater? And who do I call?
Call.
If it's leaking.
You can call.
Can I call my plumber, or can I call?
Either one. You can still call your plumber if you prefer to do business that way, and in that case, we would just provide a. in that case, we would just provide a rebate directly to you or to the plumber, depending on your choice, the homeowner's choice. Yes, sir.
I was going to say, I think it's important for this council to realize how important this piping is. I think most of them were not here when we had the plumbers in the room. But I think the figure was that once we lose a customer, it's probably about 10 years before we can get them back.
At least. Yes, sir.
And so folks need to realize how important it is to get the folks up front, and try to get them later, so.
That's absolutely correct.
After that vote, I was afraid I'd have some plumbing problem and I'd have a plumber come.
I haven't called one yet, I can assure you.
Sorry, we'll get one on Sunday, I'll tell you.
Yes. Other marketing opportunities. We have just some great opportunities in the industrial commercial sector that we're working on. And these things take a long time to develop. And we probably have several more months, maybe some years, if ever, if they develop. But if we get them, they'll be really, really special and get a lot of notoriety, not just locally, but statewide and nationally, I'm sure. The International Airport has an opportunity to add cogeneration, gas-fired cogeneration, as well as a chill water system. These chill water systems are far more efficient to operate than having a whole bunch of rooftop units because you can gain economies of scale by putting in one large central plant, piping the chill water there and cooling these buildings through the use of, of these facilities. As well as heat, you can recover heat off of the, off the engine-driven systems and that sort of thing. A great opportunity, and it looks very, very promising. University West Florida, similar opportunity. With all the expansion that's going on out there, they're very interested in a natural gas-fired generation plant, and we're talking seriously with them. On a smaller scale, University Mall, as you're aware, is rebuilding, and we've got a lot of opportunity there. Cordova Commons has four new retail stores that are putting gas in as well. As we discussed a little bit earlier, Gulf, the Gulf South acquisition is a very interesting one, and it's sort of those once-in-a-career opportunity things that you, you really are excited to get. Gulf South is the pipeline that comes from Texas all the way to the Florida line. They actually are the taxi driver that brings the gas to our system. And they have some, some high-pressure pipes within the urban area of Escanby County that they don't want anymore, and I'll tell you why. The federal regulations for pipelines, interstate pipelines, are getting more and more strict all the time. They are on us too, and certainly for interstate pipelines because their, the pressure in their system is so high. They run their gas lines at about 500 pounds per square inch, whereas ours is about 60 pounds, significantly higher. So the regulations in urban areas are very strict. They just want out of the urban areas, and so they're willing to sell those pipes to us for about $100. In addition, they're spending about a million and a half improving this, the part of the system that we're taking. And we've got some great plans to integrate those pipes into our system. It'll save us investment dollars and help us to really boost the reliability of our system. We're even picking up some land and buildings on the west side that will allow us to more quickly respond to the west side of our system. As Pensacola continues to grow, the traffic's going to get worse, and response times are going to get slower. So this is really a boon for, for the system.
Explain this west side equipment storage site. Can you elaborate a little bit on that world? You've got a pool, or have you identified a site for storage?
Oh, yes, sir. It's, it's an existing site. One of our gate stations is there, but it's also Gulf South Pipeline's local office. It's located behind Martine's, over at the, yeah, right there behind the, the old Martine's building.
Let me ask you something else regarding opportunities. For example, Habitat, I was told to build, sold me about 300, 400 houses. Do you extend any working relationship with them for, you know, the gas heaters or hot water heaters?
We would sure like to. If you have any influence over Habitat-
And you have tried to make an effort?
Oh, yes, sir. And, and they have, many years ago, sort of dabbled in gas. But their, their mission is to build the same house pretty much every time, and as simple as possible. And it's harder to put gas in than it is to build a total electric home. So we just have not been successful in convincing them that the benefits to their homebuyers outweigh the, the slower development of that home and the possibly increased cost of that home, even though we provide rebates to offset that. So we're not been successful with Habitat. And frankly, they're building more homes in Escanby County right now than any other builder by far.
Yeah, they've got quite a bit of money for that.
Yes, sir.
They allow the, the homeowner to choose an option, electricity versus gas.
No, sir. I wish they did. I wish they did. Yes, sir.
Contacted the dude, they got a new executive director over there. Might be, off to a time, the first base.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll follow up. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I think Councilman Townsend's making a great point, encouraging you to do a full-court press on this opportunity. And, and I do think it's relevant, given the, given the fact that ultimately, I mean, it's consistent with the idea of providing lower-cost shelter. So we're, it just seems to be just in lockstep with their policy. And I do know that they've had recent administration change. And I'm just wondering if, you know, perhaps all of us could, with your guidance, Don, provide for those that support that idea, could perhaps sign a letter? I, I think this is something we shouldn't overlook, and I, I appreciate you saying that. So-
Thank you.
Let us help you, if that means have some meetings up here, and we'll join you. I'm, I'm volunteering to do that.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
And if I could add real quick, if there's grants out there, federal and state grants, because if you look at Gulf Power, they have a whole renewables department, but then they have energy surveys designed for low-to-moderate-income houses and house, not househardening, but that they are trying to create a lower cost of, of operation for those homes. And if we, like Councilman Spencer said, that we're helping provide lower costs to, to operate, then we may be able to get some of those grants and have a whole, you know, function of ESP, or, excuse me, of Pensacola Energy that could be doing that for low-to-moderate-income homes. And then that would be a perfect partnership with Habitat.
That's a great opportunity. We'll sure look into that. Great ideas. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I will never be dependent on electric or cooking and hot water heater. And I'll tell you why. During Ivan, I was one of the few people in the neighborhood who still could take a hot bath and cook. And I just wonder how many people think about that, about that. And to me, that's, other than I like to cook, to cook with gas, to me, that, that was extremely important, to be able to still cook and have hot water. I don't know how many of our customers were without the ability to do that, who had gas, hot water heaters, and, and stoves compared to those who had electricity. But I, I think that's really a, a point I, I bring out to people.
Yes, ma'am. I, I would certainly never wish a hurricane on our community, but it does open folks' eyes about natural gas when that happens, both with generators as well as heating and cooking, heating, water and cooking. Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, I think that's a real plus, at least for my, for, for me to have gas.
Great. Thank you.
See what happens when you get it started.
That's okay.
I'll make it real brief. I think what would help also is if there's some type of chart you could work up that shows that the initial cost is higher, but in the long run, becomes lower. Because I think the objective is not only get the people in the house, the objective is also to keep people in the house. If you lower the cost, then there's a greater chance that a person's staying there, so.
Yeah, and we're in a great marketing position with natural gas being about half the cost of electricity. So there's no question that there's an economic benefit to folks that need it the most.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The Navy supply contract. Part of the Gulf South acquisition has brought us a new customer. Not that we've never sold gas to the Navy, but it's been very small amounts. But with this acquisition of the Gulf South pipelines, we'll pick up direct service to the three-area bases. We'll pick up an excess of $300,000 in annual revenue per year. And it's a great opportunity for us to strengthen our relationship between Pensacola and the Navy. This gives you an idea of what we're gaining with this acquisition. The, the pipelines start up around Nine Mile Road, up to the right-hand corner. That's around the Crisp Plant, and we're doing some improvements there. We'll add a little bit of eight-inch pipe to tie it into our existing system. We're also building a new gate station called Gate Six up by the Crisp Plant that will allow us to serve what will, we hope to be a electric-generating plant at University West Florida in the near future. Over to the tops, to the top-left of the screen will be our new Gate Five. As you work your way down, you'll pick up Softly Field, and, and that's that blue line about midway to the screen going to the left. And that line will be tied into our existing system, which will help us serve the CNG station that I'll talk more about in a moment at Pine Forest Road and Godwin Lane. That's very close to that area. And they, those things suck a lot of gas, so we need the boosting of that system in that area. And we come on down to the main side base, NAS, all the way to the bottom of the screen, where we'll do some additional tie-ins. The southwestern portion of our system is, I shouldn't say the weakest, but it's the lowest pressure. It's where we have some concerns, not serious concerns, but as that area grows, and the entire system grows, it takes more and more pipe space to serve the customers adequately. So this addition will allow us to tie in areas and boost pressures and reliability for the entire system. Okay, compressed natural gas facilities. This is our groundbreaking. As you're aware, we have begun construction of our first CNG, for-public CNG station in Pensacola at the ECUA's sanitation garage at Pine Forest Road and Godwin Lane. We hope to have it up and running about a month from now. And the ECUA has taken delivery, I believe, of all 50 of their CNG garbage trucks. They are adding their own particular equipment needs to them now as we finalize construction, but it's going along well. In spite of all the rain we've had, they're actually doing pretty well on, on the timeline. It's a very exciting time. This installation is going to cost a little under 1.9 million, once it's complete. And then the next station that will go in is at the city's garage, our, our own facility. This, this station, first of all, will be for public consumption as well as ECUA's use. Not the general public, but certainly fleet-buying public. So smaller fleets that we're talking to now, many of which are very interested in, in purchasing vehicles, will begin fueling there. And then the city facility will go in, probably in the fall sometime, at a cost of about $360,000. It will not be open to the public because it just doesn't have enough capacity. But it will be certainly adequate to serve the city vehicles that we have on order and already delivered to Pensacola. And then the other facility that we are still in negotiations, finalized negotiations with ECUA on, is at Ellison Park. They have a number of, of facilities, or rather, vehicles that work out of that facility. That will also be a public fueling facility, and we expect it to cost in the neighborhood of 3/4 of a million dollars. So we'll be well under the original approval that council did of 4.8 million for all three facilities, once the, these are complete. And that concludes my discussion. I'll take any questions you might have.
Yes, sir. You know, one of, one of the, I wouldn't exactly call it a scrape, but my first term on, on council, one of my biggest concerns was the amount of money that we were spending on marketing and advertising. And I understand the difference between those, those two. And I know the thing that I had not made myself clear on, because you thought I was arguing that it was too much. And, and the argument was, is how do we know how much is the, the right amount? And my concern is, is that we've been under marketing and under-advertising all these years. I'm not sure that it would have necessarily reversed the trend because there was many factors that went in there to having fewer customers. But in the long term, I think that it keeps Pensacola Energy right in front of, of, of the public, and, and that, that there's not that dark period going on there. And I don't expect you to respond to that right now, but for fiscal year 2014, that, those are one, that's something that I just think has probably been underfunded by half or more. And I'd just like to be able to, at a budget presentation, have a rationale why we pick a particular number, not because that's just the number that we had left over. And the other thing on the, the natural gas, I'm, I'm natural gas, I'm user, I heat with it. I've got my water heater on it. And, and for some reason, even though natural gas is half the price of what it takes to create the equivalent BTUs in electricity, my wife always complains about the Pensacola Energy bill, much more so than the Gulf Power bill. If I told her, because when I'm, I'm talking about the BTU production, not just in how much natural gas it takes, but we have a, a profit built in there. ESP is a, a business, and we're not out here to protect taxpayers so much on the paying end because we're, we're, we've got ratepayers as, as, as the customer. And most of our ratepayers live outside of the city, and they're helping fund, you know, our, our operations in here. But when you consider everything that we're doing, and, and in the expansions, and, and upgrading existing infrastructure, and that profit margin that we have built in for the general fund, BTU production versus Gulf Power, does it still, do you guys still stand up to it being the better deal?
Oh, yes, yes. We're about half the cost of electricity.
When you, when you put in all of that, even the profit margin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, good.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, all right. Take on.
My question actually went along with that as well, and it's being able to show citizens a return on investment, some of the calculations. I'm on page 202 and 203, so my first question would be the advertising number. How can we articulate that to folks as far as our decisions that we're making for advertising, what our expected return on them is, or what our hoped-for outcome? I mean, just some, I'm not looking for buzzwords, but just an explanation of the increase of 100,000 and what that will impact if it's going towards the rebates for tankless, or what, you know, what direct focus was that? Okay, we need 100,000 more this year.
Frankly, that, that, those dollars do not go to rebates at all. That is strictly media advertising increase. And knowing that we were going into a rebranding and a name change, we knew it was critical that we had additional dollars to get that name out there. And I would expect, hopefully, an uptick in, in, in business, simply because we're going to be advertising more in order to get the new name out there. Not only that, but frankly, the new agency's a little more expensive than we've done in the past, but they're very, very effective. We're very impressed with their creativity, with the ideas they're coming up with. We hope to develop a plan that I can give you more specifics on how we might measure. It's always a question we, we struggle with. And not just our company, but all, all utilities, probably all companies, I guess, struggle with, how do you know you're spending the right amount?
Well, and are you asking the right questions, too?
That's right. Get the right message out.
Right.
And, and it's hard to put a finger on it in a lot of ways, but we continue to do that. We do it through surveys to try to see what our brand awareness is, and it's been increasing over the years. But now we're changing the name of the brand, so we have to not really start over, because it's a very closely related name. But frankly, I think the synergies between our name and what will be the City of Pensacola's logo, or is now the City of Pensacola's logo, and all the other departments, is going to really improve our brand identity.
Okay.
I think, I'm excited about that, and I think it'll do well.
All right. And then the other three questions are just, they're actually line items on page 203 and 9350. Is that related to price and use-driven? It's a quite volatile number. I mean, from 22 million down to 17, estimated of 30 million for this year, and then you're asking for 24, which is a lot less. I mean, my-
That's the cost of gas, is it?
So that's, yeah.
Yeah. It's just the declining cost of gas, number one, but also we just purchased so much less gas last year because it was warm.
And then, other contractual services went from 425,000 to 1.9 million. What is the reason for that drastic change? 563,000.
What item are you on?
9357.
Yeah, page 203. Yeah, page 203.
Ninety-three fifty-seven? Okay.
Is it bond, Mike?
Yeah.
It's, it's the, we did a bond issue, and it will help fund construction dollars, and in turn, we're going to use some of the dollars that were originally allocated or would have been allocated for construction to pay for the CNG stations.
That was something we voted on as council.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the other one would be 9360 miscellaneous went from ten thousand to one-point-nine million.
Oh, yeah, that's the infrastructure recovery. That was reclassified, and that's the amount that we will spend and recover this fiscal year. Actually, we won't recover a full million this year. This current fiscal year, we will spend about a half-million dollars. You know, there's always a year lag in the recovery of, through infrastructure. So we'll recover that half-million this coming fiscal year, but we'll increase the spend rate to a million this fiscal year, so, in '14, we'll recover that million. Does that make sense? We'll recover the-
So it's like a depreciation in reverse, or what are you, you're saying a cost recovery? If you could just clarify that and-
Well, we couldn't recover the cost until we spent it.
Okay.
So we'll spend, as Suarez was saying, about half-million this year.
It's part of the infrastructure for compressed natural gas stations?
No, this is, this is infrastructure recovery. Right, replacement of obsolete.
As a whole.
Yes.
What else is in miscellaneous? I guess I'm just a little confused why something that important would just be thrown in a miscellaneous account. Is there a reason for-
I think the historical miscellaneous is there, it's a new program, is what they're looking at, and it certainly does point it out to council exactly what we're doing. Depending on where they actually spend that money, it will probably be divided through the line items during the year, but we did want to point it out to the council of this new program. You know what I mean? So it just depends on where and what construction, and whether it's repair maintenance or whatever they're actually doing out there. But we want it to identify the program to council that it's new. Because this is the, although Don's, the ESP at Pensacola Energy is expending, they're expending the money this year, then we don't bill it out till next year. So you're always going to be a year behind on this program.
Okay.
And the only other, the only other miscellaneous that's been in the past is a state fee-
Okay.
-based upon revenue that we had to pay to support the Public Service Commission.
So there's not a huge list of miscellaneous?
No.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to know. All set. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Myers.
Thank you. Well, I, too, had marked the very same, as Councilwoman DeWes had marked. I think it would really be helpful, when you have a miscellaneous item like this that's jumped almost two million dollars, that maybe you could put an asterisk down on the page and explain what it is, because the public looking at it-
Yes, ma'am.
You know, they, I mean, I don't have a clue, they don't have a clue. Let's see here. Okay, she answered, asked most of the questions I had on that page. Going up here to page 202, I did just want to say that our advertising, what we've been spending on advertising has actually gone up quite a bit since 2011. It's gone up a hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, you know, and we're adding about thirty-eight thousand extra this year, in 2013. So I guess the issue is, how do, how do we measure what we're getting the bang for our buck, I guess, when we spend money on advertising?
Yes, ma'am. As I was trying to explain to Councilwoman DeWes, it's a struggle that we've always never really overcome. We do customer surveys, we try to track the responses of our customers to the extent that we can from where they found out about us. Of course, every, you know, ideally, everybody in Skimby County knows who we are. Certainly, the name change is going to make that a challenge for a little while, but we'll get there pretty quickly with some targeted advertising to change the name in the customers' minds. But frankly, there's no hard and fast way to determine whether or not you're as effective as you need to be in the short term with advertising. Over the long term, sure. If you've got a good program over a ten-year period, you can look back at the number of customers added, the number of customers retained, the amount of revenue you've generated, and say, yeah, we're doing, we did that right. But it's just hard to tell short-term with our kind of a product just how effective you are.
Okay, I understand. And then just one more line item. Ninety-three thirty-five under professional services. I noticed that in 2011, it was five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. 2012, it went down to one-fifteen, and it's still at one-fifteen. Why did we decrease professional services so dramatically from 2011-
I don't remember.
-to 2012 and '13 are still the same?
We just have to get that answered.
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's too far back. We'll have to do a little research and see why we reduced it that past year.
Okay, well, what are professional services? What are we using in terms of professional services?
It's things like legal, I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, medical background checks, consultants when they do rate studies, and it may have been a rate study that we had to pay for, that particular, we'll have to check to clarify that. Those kinds of things. Consultant services.
I didn't hear Councilwoman DeWes-
There was a rate study in 2011.
Okay. That looks like a consultant.
I believe it was a rate study for '11.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Wu?
Just out of curiosity, do you have any idea what Gulf Power spends a year on advertising?
Oh, wow. No, I don't, but it's significantly more than we do. Of course, their service territory is much larger than ours, too. They go to Panama City.
Yeah, I don't have the problem some folks may have. I remind folks McDonald's sells more hamburgers than anybody else, and somebody can make the argument they're number one, so why would they ever need a McDonald ad? In deference to some of the people sitting in the audience, Bud Light seem to do pretty well. You know, I can't imagine him ever pulling their ads, you know, so. It's hard to, no, 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 no. But I'm just explaining why I don't have the heartburn with it, because it's necessary to maintain that position, because otherwise, McDonald, why would they do another penny in advertising if everybody knows they're the number-one-selling, you know, hamburger place?
That's right.
Yeah, they do.
Okay. And I'm going to move to the side of the table, but as we're coming around this way, I'm just going to take the opportunity to speak again, and it does have to do with the marketing and advertising budget. I'm not going to mention the gentleman's name, but there's a restaurateur in Pensacola who just asked me one day, says, "How much do you think I spend on advertising annually, Sam, for the one restaurant?" And it's one of the most popular restaurants in the entire region, and it would be even without the advertising. It's over a quarter-million dollars just for the one restaurant. And when he acquired a second restaurant downtown, and that was really poised to be as successful, to a much higher-end level, he was shocked to find out, but one of the reasons the guys were struggling there is because they had like a seven-thousand-five-hundred-dollar a year advertising budget. The first thing he did was just inject it, you know, a bunch of money into that. So I'm not, I'm not stingy when it comes to advertising. I'd support an increase in that. Mr. Townsend?
No, I'm fine. It's just that I think you explained the increase in other contractual services, but it appears that y'all were having a private conversation between the two of you, and I couldn't hear what you said about that.
I'm so sorry, I thought I had that way.
So I would hope that the people, you know, I'm about the oldest person in here, and I can't hear good. So I wish you would please speak up in the mic, so I can hear, and I won't have to ask a question over and over again.
And if I could, Councilman, just to clarify, under the budget message, there is explanation of those line items that were questioned, and it's XXX is the, in the budget message last paragraph, it explains those two line items specifically, if you need clarification.
Thank you.
XXX.
I have a couple of questions. As we come over to this side of the table, we're almost fifteen minutes over. I'm not too concerned about it, because we've got a pretty generous lunch hour built in there, and, but we do have Mr. Mathis waiting back here. Mr. Spencer?
Mine is not about marketing.
Okay. Go ahead.
Quick question. I would like to know how, and I sent out an email to someone, a friend of mine in Houston that has an energy company and has worked internationally. I'm curious about this liquid, the liquid natural gas potential as an exported commodity. I mean, that's, that could be significant, given the fact we also, you know, how, what are the trends? If you could please let us know, just so we can start being perhaps more alert about that. We've got Mr. Mathis following your presentation.
Sure. I'll just give you a little quick update on the trends. About a decade ago, the trend was to build port facilities to import natural gas, because the expectation was that we would not have enough to meet our demands. That changed with shale gas, and now those same folks that built those import terminals and mothballed them are looking at a way to make money off of them, and some of them are considering exporting. If it happens, it might very well be a short-term event, short-term meaning five, 10 years, because frankly, shale gas is not just in the United States, it's all over the world. Interestingly, it's developing very slowly in other countries because of the great property rights advantage we have here in the United States. Folks own their mineral rights here. They don't own their mineral rights in most other countries, and so there's not that profit motive of the individual to develop that resource. It's up to the government to decide to get around to do it, and their governments are moving slowly. So they'll get there. They'll probably develop it at some point, or many, many of them will certainly, but it's taking longer than it has in the United States. And so I'm not sure how viable exporting LNG is going to be. I think it's going to happen to some extent, but whether it's going to be a large part of the supply picture, leaving the country or not, I'm just not sure. I think the jury's still out on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just getting back to marketing. What did this name change cost, Pensacola Energy?
Well, it hasn't cost that much yet, because we really haven't, we just have changed the
name officially, and now we're going to begin changing signs out and literature and that sort of thing. But frankly, we were going to be cutting new commercials anyway with a new agency. That's typically the trend, because, you know, they have new ideas, and it's a fresh outlook, and that's the reason you change. So in that respect, as far as advertising dollars, the change won't be that great. We're estimating a hundred thousand more than we typically would have spent in the first year to do all these changes, but I don't have a good handle on exactly what the cost would be.
Yeah, and the other thing is, it's kind of hard to read the bottom of Pensacola there. It's, it might need to be a little bit darker, just a suggestion. And thank, thank God for media here, because I didn't know about the name change, and someone came up and said, "Did you read in the Pensacola News Journal about your gas company's name change?" And I went, "No, I didn't know anything about it." So it's good that we have media here that can let the city council know what's going on. Thank you.
I wanted to go back, I have a few different questions. You talked about the infrastructure recovery, the miscellaneous line item. In the, in the budget for revenues, you have a million dollars mark. You said that you've done, for the infrastructure recovery line item, you said that you've done about five-hundred thousand so far this year. My understanding is, we can only bill whatever we've done, or we, we expect to do a whole lot more before the end of the year? Or, or is about five hundred, that this million was just sort of a placeholder?
We've talked about two things, so let's, let me try to clarify what is where. So the miscellaneous line item, the million nine thirty-six five hundred, if you recall, this may make it more confusing, hopefully it'll clear it up. If you recall, there was two issues. One, the revenue went down. The council put a mechanism in the rate in order to add on up to ten cent, I think, per CCF, in order to recover lost revenue, which was basically your reserve that we measure, okay? And so in order to capture that and identify that, that is what's shown in recovery, cost recovery, in the nine-three-sixty line item. So the revenue item you're specifically speaking of is in the other line item that you were talking about, which I believe is in the other contractual services, nine-three-fifty-seven. And in that line item, it is made up of two pieces, and I'll try to give it to you. It's comprised of nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the infrastructure recovery program. Okay, now that, that's one piece, and then four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, six-hundred for the gas piping program, and forty-five thousand for the annual maintenance contracts for the CNG fueling station, and then twenty-five thousand for constructing a deep well for the corrosion program, and twenty-two thousand four hundred for various support maintenance fees. And there, again, all this is described, and probably would be clearer if we had put a footnote for those big items, that it is described on page XXX of the budget message down at the bottom last paragraph. But those big items, we try to describe in the budget message, but I just want to clarify because we were talking about two different items. One is the, to get our reserves back up to the fifteen percent where they need to be, okay? And then the other is all in nine-three-fifty-seven.
Okay. It probably would help, I think, all of us if you could just send us a little email. I was trying to write that down, and I failed.
I was reading it from XXX.
Yeah.
So if you just read that paragraph in a future question, I'd be glad to answer.
And so then you were saying that the miscellaneous is a ten, some units, increase that was a cost recovery. So last year, we voted to raise rates-
Yes.
-put in the infrastructure recovery thing, and there's also an additional amount that we can impose randomly to recoup our costs?
Well, it's not imposed randomly. I guess last year you approved that. The infrastructure recovery on the bill will not start till the October billing.
Right.
Okay, now that, you're expending it now, it'll start for the October billing, what you expend-
I'm good with that one.
...in this fiscal year. The ten cent is to get you back to your reserve. If you recall, when we closed out fiscal '11, you had drawn down your reserves, it was fourteen-point-something percent, drew down to seven percent. And we're trying to recover that in the rate also. So in the rate, there is ten cent per CCF that is charged to get you back to your reserve. When the reserve hits the fifteen percent, that will be stopped.
And-
But it's, it's been a consistent ten cent since we started billing and the new rates were approved, and that will stop once the reserve is built back up.
When you get your bill, there's your, you know, X cents per CCF, or whatever the unit is. There's the, the line maintenance, there's, there's going to be an infrastructure line. The ten cent recovery, that's rolled into the rate, or is that a separate line item? It's rolled into the rate?
It, it will not be a separate line item. I do not believe either the infrastructure recovery is going to be a separate line item. Your bill's gonna, line items on the bill are going to be the same. The ten cents is rolled into the purchased gas at cost, and the infrastructure recovery will be, and fuel also.
Okay.
So both of those will be in that fee that you see on that line item.
Okay, and the ten cents started this winter, or it will start?
I believe October.
Yes.
I believe October, right after you approve the rate.
Okay, so it's not another thing that will surprise people this year?
No, it's not another.
Okay, and then I wanted to ask, I'll go with the, the marketing thing was, Mr. Suarez, you mentioned something about, it costs us about two-hundred dollars a year in advertising to add a burner tip, basically.
Per burner tip, yes.
Per burner tip. And so that, that, when I do my, well, I'm terrible, I messed it up, but, so that, how many burner tips do we add any year?
Let's see, I think I've got a number here somewhere in my notes. I will caution you, though, that is a very weak measure of success, because much of what that expenditure does is retain customers, too, number one. Number two, we don't know about every burner tip that's added. We know about the ones that we pay rebates on, certainly, and occasionally, when we happen to go to a house and have some interaction with that customer, and instead of just doing the water heater, they also do the range and the dryer and the, you know, that sort of thing. We'll know about, but- We'll know about, but, but we don't, we have no concept about, a very poor concept about how many other burner tips are added, where we never hear about them. But at any rate, last year, we added, we expect to add around 18, a little under 1,800 this year.
Okay. Okay, and, and so, I mean, I guess we're hoping to add more than that next year with the increase in advertising. I think it, there have been enough questions about advertising that I think maybe the rest of the council might be interested to know what sorts of things we're expecting to do this year with the advertising dollars in terms of, you know, we know we've done the water heater replacements and things like that. But just sort of a, if we could get sort of a breakout where we got that advertising number. And finally, so we've, I'm always intrigued at how we come up with what our budgeted, or proposed revenue is. And I've come to the suspicion that we come up with the proposed revenue to assume that it will be a number such that 8 million is about 15% of it. Because, I mean, if you look historically, 2009, we got 49 million, 2010, 46 million, 2011, 40 million. This year, what, what are we thinking our revenue's gonna be? I mean, we keep hearing we're way below what we thought.
I'll tell you. We base our revenue calculations on a normal winter, and our, and our revenue, I mean, or rather, our gas sales on a normal winter. We estimate our revenue and gas cost numbers based on what it's been for many, many years. We went through a period where gas costs were three to four times higher than they are now. And we don't know that that's not going to happen again. Some odd situation in the marketplace just drives that price way, way up. We were fortunate when this, when this phenomenon first occurred back in 2000, that we had just changed our rate structure dramatically from a declining block rate where it was fixed. Didn't matter what gas costs were. You consume this much gas, here's your bill. Fortunately, the council voted at that time to change that rate structure by separating out the gas cost from the, the cost of providing service. Had we not done that, we'd have been coming back to those councils at least once a month for significant rate increases. Nobody likes passing rate increases, frankly. It's bad press. It gets a lot of heat from your, from our customers for us and from your constituents based on what's happening. So, it was a good move at the time. We continue to estimate high because we'd rather be high than low. And certainly, we want to keep our revenue picture within that 15% guideline by council. But frankly, that's worked for us, and, and, you know, certainly we'll consider it something different if, if you can convince Dick that's the right thing to do. It's, it's been a good policy all these years.
Okay, 'cause I guess, you know, you talk about a normal winter, and I think nobody knows what normal is these days. But, you know, just being able to look back, it just seems like it's been a lot less than what's been budgeted each year. And I think that that becomes almost a question for the council in terms of, you know, you've survived with us taking the eight, 8 million out on you even with these low revenues, and is that something we would consider changing the percentage? Or, you know, I, I just think that it's sort of a, I read somewhere in the budget, you know, we have the long-term budgeted amount or something. And, and I just think that, that we're not quite being honest when we keep taking out such a large percentage and saying that we only take out 15% of budgeted. It seems a little not clear. But I think that's my questions. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Wu. Mr. Gerald?
Yes, a couple of quick questions. Number one, are we appropriately dealing with our collecting revenues from our residential and our business community, I mean, charges and payment? Is that something that we need to be concerned about at this point?
Actually, I think we have a very robust collection policy. It's fair to the customers, and it also, at the same time, collects the money in a very timely manner. Frankly, it was tightened up several years ago, and the interesting outcome was that we had fewer customer complaints. We used to allow customers to go for a longer period of time before literally cutting their service off. We shortened that time period up, and, and it helps those customers that struggle with paying their bills. It helped them pay them in a more timely manner by, you know, the wolf's at the door, I gotta hurry up and do something about it. And when those bills got to be several hundred dollars deep, they just had no way to dig out. Whereas now that we, we shorten that timeframe up, they don't tend to be as large, and they're able to come up with the money in a more.
And have we also modified our business community as well, the businesses that are downtown and around? So, we've modified that, and.
Yes, sir.
That's something we don't have to be concerned about. Last question. How are we doing on the high-tech tankless water heater?
Extremely well.
Extremely well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may ask some questions of Mr. Suarez?
Certainly.
All right, thank you. Mr. Suarez, I heard you talk about the estimated number of burner tips. But how many new customers have you gotten to date in FY 2012? How many do you project in actual new customers? Not net new, but new customers?
Not net new. We picked up, as I recall, I don't have the exact number, but I think it's around 300 this, this fiscal year.
Is that 300 residential or business?
Both.
Both, okay. And then, now as a customer, than anything else, because I don't recall from last year's budget discussions, that infrastructure cost adjustment, what do you estimate that's going to be per month on our bills?
I don't have a monthly figure for you. It'll be this coming fiscal year, approximately a half million dollars added to the overall collection. And the following year, approximately 1 million.
No, I mean, I mean, for me, what is it going to be on my bill?
I haven't calculated that.
When will that be calculated?
Well, we can do it pretty quickly, but I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. I think it'd be good for council to be informed of what that's going to be on our bills, so that you know what we customers are paying. And now, Mr. President, I just have one comment. I am greatly concerned, as Councilwoman Dr. Pratt mentioned, you know, there are three line items. There's the customer charge, which is a fixed charge. There's a distribution charge, which is a fixed rate based on our usage. And then there's the fuel cost. Well, the fuel cost is our dump. You know, that's, that's where we dump everything we, you know, we don't want the customer to see. You know, that's the, the, you know, fuel cost and transportation cost, which is considered part of the, the fuel cost. You know, that, in, in budget hearings last year, I remember Mr. Suarez, in answer to a question, said that the fuel cost is a straight pass-through. That is no longer true. As of, you know, as of last year, the pass-through, all of a sudden, is the pass-through plus the, the recovery for the reserve fund, which I know is being called 10 cents, but that's a dollar per thousand cubic feet, okay? You know, it's, it's, you know, you say 10 cents, and it doesn't sound so great, but it's, in the winter, you know, that's, that's, that's a dollar per thousand cubic feet. So, so now, your pass-through fuel cost is the fuel and transportation, it's the recovery, it's the weather normalization adjustment, which I think is a wonderful euphemism for, we didn't sell enough gas, so you have to pay more for it. We didn't sell. And finally, this year, a figure, you know, also rolled into that is going to be this infrastructure recovery. And council members, I don't know if you have the power to do so, but I think this is not truth in billing. This is not truth in billing. And, you know, I keep up with it. I know what's in there because I keep up with it. But I probably, and you, council members, or our customers here, you know, also realize, we are the only customers of ESP who understand what a melange, what a potpourri this fuel cost is. It is no longer a pass-through. So, I ask you to consider at some point, if it is within your legislative powers, to let us have some truth in billing on our customer bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Myers?
Well, I want to thank Diane for bringing forth that suggestion because, I, I mean, I don't know what these things are either, what they really are. And I think that truth in billing would be a good policy for the city council to set, to set. And I'm just wondering if there are any federal laws or state laws that require something called truth in, in billing? Let's see, our attorney's eating lunch, so could we put that on the agenda for our attorney to ask Mr. Messer?
I'll put, I'll put a note on, off to the side here.
If I could offer just a brief explanation, we utilize a consultant to help us develop our rates for a reason. Investor-owned utilities have departments that develop rates and rate proposals to take before the Public Service Commission. We hire a consultant, then they use them too, to model our rate structure after investor-owned utilities. Investor-owned utility rate managers will tell you that the Public Service Commission has learned through many years of developing these rates that you can put too much information in a bill. It causes confusion among your customer base. It causes phone calls and emails and all that sort of thing to the Public Service Commission. It causes you to have to increase the number of staff you have answering customer inquiries about all the different line items on a bill. And it, it doesn't help the situation. When customers ask the question, we provide the information, and some of them do, a lot of them do, Ms. Mack does. We certainly don't want to be truthful in that respect. But you can crowd a bill with way too much information and cause more confusion than clarity.
Well, are you saying that the Public Service Commission has some guidelines on what information you need to put in a bill?
I don't know that they provide guidelines. What they do is tell the investor-owned utilities. We are, our rates are set by you, not by the Public Service Commission. But we model our rate structures after investor-owned utilities. And this is what they have had passed by public service commissions in the past. So, that's all I can, I really know about.
Okay.
Okay. I want, want to ask you guys indulgence. I want to apologize for, to Clyde and Amy for dropping this on them at the, at the late hour. What I'd like to do is just go ahead and break now till 12:45. And instead of starting back, you know, at 1:30, is just put them on at 12:45 to go ahead of housing. That'd put us back on track. Any objection? We're recessed until 12:45. Thank you.